Good evening, everyone. It's great to see so many smiling faces with us this evening. I'm going to call the October 9th Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Dallow.
Here.
Mr. Seiko.
Here.
Ms. Casali.
Here.
Mr. Repone.
Here.
Mr. Wozniak.
Here.
Chairman Moffett is absent. Acting Chairman Turner.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in...hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next approval of our minutes from our September 25th, 2017, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tonight, we have two site plans, and one is a public hearing. The first one is Site Plan Number 17-41 SLU-10 for Steve Orr, the shores of Clear Spring Lake, north of 23 Mile Road, between Ryan Road and Dequender, 54 single-family site condominium units. Secretary Moore, will you please read the notice as published?
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a 54 single-family site condominium unit development. Applicant: Steve Orr, Lakeshore Shelby, Inc., 5877 Livernoy, Suite 103, Troy, Michigan, 48098. Proposed use: 54 single-family site condominium units. Site Plan Number 17-41 SLU-10. Location: North of 23 Mile Road, between Ryan Road and Dequender, Sidwell Number 23-07-18-400-004. Legal description is as follows: The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October 9th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site condominium application. The application for the planned unit development may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Gerald Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on September 20th, 2017. There were 156 property owners, and one applicant were notified on September 19th, 2017.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Dennewith, does the notice meet all our requirements under state statute and local ordinances?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Do we receive any correspondence on this, Mrs. Moore?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair, from Mr. and Mrs. Hester. They live on Sandy Creek Drive, and they have concerns about the setbacks and the development in question. So hopefully they're here tonight so they can address it too as well.
That's it? Okay.
Thank you.
The format for tonight's public hearing will be as follows: The petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and the petitioner may make any concluding remarks if they'd like afterwards. Is the petitioner here? I believe he is. He can come on up and let us know what he plans to do on this parcel. Come on down. State your name and address for the record, and then I need you to sign in after also.
Good evening. John Thompson with PEA.
You move that mic up a little bit. I don't think they can...
2430 Rochester Court, Troy.
Can you hear him back there? Can you hear it? Okay, speak a little louder.
Louder.
Yep.
Also with me, Steve Orr, the petitioner.
Okay.
So, the premise of this subdivision for this condominium was the continuation...was originally a preliminary plat. So there was a four-phase preliminary plat, and Phase 1, 2, and 3 are...3 is almost completed?
With the exception of two sites, yes.
So now, we're moving into Phase 4. As stated, this is 54 single-family units. Rather than continue with the plat, we were going to convert that into a condominium, but all other layouts and such from the original plat maintain the same. So setbacks, lot widths, with some minor tweaking, meet the original preliminary plat, those previously approved by this board.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions at first? Before we go to the floor, Mr. Winn, I'd like to get your comments on this if we could first. Go ahead.
Well, let me just give you a little more background, because I wish we had a board here. It would be useful.
Right.
But I think most people are aware where this is. There were three phases. The access through this site is from...two access points from 23 Mile Road, and you take those both roads, one's Forster Lane, the other...I think both Forster Lane, and you would then connect those...both those roads dead end or stub in this vacant property, which is in the northwest corner of the site. To the north, you have the single-family homes that are along Sandy Creek. To the west, you have some industrial, and then you have the Sheldon Court Estates attached condominium. So that's the context here. So what they'd be doing is extending that...those sub-streets with roads that back up to the Sandy Creek lots, and then lots that would back up along the lake. So that's the bigger context so that we understand where that is. So there are some...this is kind of a unique parcel. The condominium aspect of it is just a technicality. These are single-family homes, and we require the same standards as we would if they were just subdividing this normally. So we have a total of 27 lots that don't meet the R-1B requirements of 14,400 square feet. They are doing a lot averaging, and the original plat, when this was developed, had lots that were somewhat smaller, the 10,400 square feet. We amended the ordinance in 1997, so there's a way of trying to reconcile the new requirements, which is 14,400. So they don't fully meet those, although the lot averaging is...does meet that standard. We don't know if there's a site entry. Garages are planned for that site. If there is, we want a uniform plan showing that location. Lots 1 through 6 and a portion of Lot 7, a butt LM district to the west, so they may want to consider some screening to make those lots more...separate them from the industrial. Again, going back to the R-1B requirements, the R-1B rear yard setback is 50 feet. They're proposing 35. There are some setbacks...side yard setback of 24 feet between units, and Lots 7 and 8 do not meet the required lot width of 90 feet. The previous phase, Phase 3, did seek some relief from the Board of Appeals for those requirements. We will need a master deed for the site. There's some significant comments from the Building Department, one regarding soil testings required for the placement of fill and land balancing within the building envelope, including decks and patio areas. I'm just going to read these because I think they're important instead of paraphrasing them. In prior phases, property owners have improved shoreline areas contrary to MDEQ requirements. It may be helpful to incorporate restrictions in the bylaws to provide notice to future property owners about shoreline improvements. Slops on the backside of retaining walls are steep and will likely be difficult to maintain. If intended to be accessed, guardrails should be provided. Given the significant elevation differences across lots, most lots will require township engineer inspection rather than building department. And then carrying that over to the township engineer's comments, she has a couple, I think, that are, again, pertinent that kind of echo a little bit what Mr. Wood from the Building Department said. All recorded easements must be indicated on the site plan and topographic survey. There's a 100-foot easement for a 96-inch water main along the western property line that wasn't shown. Should be clarified if there's an easement for the overhead power line and guy wires along the north. And finally, the last comment that I think is of significance from our engineers, the plan indicates the existing 1.15 to 1.2 slope to remain in place. This exceeds the permissible slope. Our site visit reveals that the area has been stabilized with vegetation and trees. However, the vegetation is natural and may be undesirable for potential homeowners if left in place. Furthermore, the maintenance of the area with the excessive slopes is undefined. We recommend that the area be reestablished with a permissible 1 to 4 slope, and retaining walls is necessary. A developer-installed retaining wall is preferable for the site rather than individual site retaining walls. Setback lines, building envelopes should be adjusted to ensure that the slope remains stabilized, and rear yard setbacks should be adjusted for the existence of the water main along the western property line. So there's a reason this last phase of the project is the last phase. It has some pretty significant issues to overcome, more of an engineering issue. And it's not that they can't be overcome, but we want to give ourselves sufficient time to make sure that everything is done properly. That's why our suggestion is to postpone this tonight, gather what other information we may have from the neighbors, and see if we...what adjustments can be made to address those concerns. We did walk the site, Carol, myself, and Julie, and, you know, the elevations are pretty extreme in the back there, and we don't want to leave that to individual owners. We want it to be done in a more uniform, consistent way. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a question. Even though this is a continuation of the whole plat, to me, when I look at it, this seems to indicate almost a standalone site condominium development because you have monument signs on both sides indicating a beginning and the end. So if this were a new development, would we be...we'd be requiring them to stick to the R-1B, but because it's a continuation, we're saying revert back to the old R-1B?
No, no. They...it's still going to meet the R-1B standards. Now, there may be some physical constraints here that would suggest some relief may be necessary, but that's a Board of Appeals action, so we're not taking any action on the setbacks tonight. I know the previous phase did get some relief, but I don't think the slopes were the same. So there's no guarantee that this site would get the same amount of relief. So, you know, we have to evaluate if those are appropriate or not.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
Just the slope is part of the variance request also, right?
Well, I'm not sure. That's an engineering standard that they're asking for a variance on. So that would...that variation would be dealt with during engineering, but I think our engineer wanted to at least see what that slope...how it's going to be stabilized and what that treatment's going to be. Because at one end, it's not as bad as you walk west along that, you know, interior portion of the site. As you go west, the slope gets steeper. So...
Okay. And then, under the R-1B standard, if there are going to be lots that vary from that, that'd be also at the zoning board.
Actually, no, that could...the Township Board could deal with a lot averaging.
We could do that, too.
Yes. Yeah. And that's a little more common. We've dealt with that lot averaging, so they're not wildly out of line. There's some bigger, there's some smaller. But the setback issues, I think, are relevant, particularly as you back up to the northern...you know, back up to the subdivision to the north, you want to make sure there's adequate privacy for everybody.
I agree. And then, so none of the setback requirements are part of...or pertinent to our discussion?
Not tonight. That will have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dallow?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, Mr. Winn, probably you could help me. In the bylaws in Phase 1, 2, and 3 to the residents that they there, were Phase 4 indicated to them in the bylaw that is coming up in the future?
I don't know. I think Mr. Orr might be able to answer that question better than I could. I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Dallow.
All right.
But they will have to, at some point, come in with their own restrictions, and I think concerns were raised earlier this week from some of the residents that how do these restrictions relate to the existing sub...there needs to be some compatibility, obviously. That's kind of a private matter in some ways, but, you know, nevertheless, I think, out of respect for the residents, they need to know what those restrictions are.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Sure. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the floor. Before we do that, this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special...this planned unit development request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We're a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this planned unit development request. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak can do so. Since we have a lot of people that would...everyone will have a right to speak. If we have a group spokesperson, that would be good. If not, come on down, give us your name, and then after you're done speaking, if you could sign in, that would help.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ireland of 3321 Sandy Point. I am currently the President of the Clear Spring Homeowners Association, Phase 1. Just to comment a little bit, Mr. Dallow brought up a point that was really addressed back 10, 15 years ago when Phase 2 and 3 were incorporated. Part of the minutes probably reflect back then of the Township Board. Requested, required that it be one homeowner association because we're on a lake, and the rules and the restrictions are different than being on a normal subdivision. So that probably reflects back in the minutes when they did Phase 2 and 3. I guess that is our biggest concern tonight as a homeowners group. We're in the process of merging Phase 1, 2, and 3. We're in the final stages of working with the attorneys, which we'd hoped to have been done by now. It was taking a little bit longer than we anticipated. So there will be one association governing Phase 1, 2, and 3, and with the same bylaws, the same covenants, exact same rules, the same dues, everything. We feel it's important that the master deeds reflect our current covenants and bylaws as the same...because we...number one, we have restrictions on the types of boats that we use on the lakes, the sizes, et cetera. We want to make sure that everybody participates in the care of the lake. We have two entrances coming in with the sub right now, with condominiums will be using those entrances. We maintain landscaping. We feel that they should participate in those costs and that work and be part of our association. So I guess to sum it up, basically, our main concern is that the master deeds and the covenants are followed. Our covenants pretty much say that all future phases...covenants of Phase 1, 2, and 3 all say, "All future phases of land you still conform to our covenants," which we don't have that in front of you, but that's our main concern. That's our reason for being here. I understand the rationale between detached site condos, and say if we have any questions about setbacks and side yards and lot sizes, we can address. So that the zoning board will feel, as Mr. Winn said. So that's my summation of what I'm here for tonight. I'm sure there's other members who'd like to add a little bit more history. We have, like, four past presidents sitting in the audience, so they've been around for a long time. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ireland. Make sure you sign in, too. Right over here.
Mr. Ireland.
Would you sign in over here? Yeah, thank you. Come on down, sir.
My name is Gerald Mayby. I'm the Vice President of the Board, Phase 1. Questions I have are, from when they were developing Phases 2 and 3, the developer piled up a lot of dirt along Phase 4, and a lot of it got pushed into the lake. Are they going to be required to pull that dirt back to the original shoreline? That's one question. Second, can you define what do you mean by a condo, single family? Does that mean the family owns the land and the property in the building? Or what does it mean? Is there a common maintenance group that's going to maintain everything outside?
What we'll do is we'll take all of your questions, and then we'll answer them all at the same time.
Okay.
I'm writing them down. Go ahead.
Okay. That's my main concern, and like Bill said, they have to apply to our bylaws. We own the lake. They have to meet our requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in, too. Who's next? Come on down, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Unger. I live at 51221 Forster Lane, and my biggest concern is, as Mr. Winn pointed out, we only have two entrances. And now we're talking, what, close to 400 residents with two entrances off 23 Mile Road? Earlier, discussions were held about linking our subdivision to the one just north of us, but apparently those folks objected, and those lots or those plans were put aside and not followed through on. I'm a little uncomfortable with having that many residents in only two entrances. Very uncomfortable with that. You've got a lot of school kids that have to go in and out of there, and right now, the parents are driving them up to those two entrances in the morning, and they're creating some traffic problems. So that is one of the big concerns I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Unger. Come on down. Don't be shy. Raise your hand.
Jeff Semrau, 3162 Sandy Creek. Does the builder have the permit to fill in the lake where he wants to build the...so he has the actual size to put the houses? From what I see on the drawings, some of those lots go to 65 to 80 feet of fill, and then you're going to put a house on top of that, and plus what you're going to disturb in the lake that's been settled for 50 years. The PCB...or the...yeah, PCBs, and the mercury and all that that's in there right now. And I was just wondering about the steepness because one of my lot is one that's very steep, and I was just wondering how they were going to handle that, but he already addressed that. So that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Come on down.
My name is Pete Matera. I'm President of Sheldon Court Estates, and I'm sort of curious, how does that affect our property line and that drop-off, that 6, 8, 10 feet? Is that where we're talking about putting a retainer wall?
We'll take all your questions, and then we'll have them all answered at the same time. Okay. Come on down, sir.
Yes, my name is Ray Sney. I live at 51448 Forster Drive, and my biggest concern is I did not see any construction access. Now, if they're going to be developing that thing, especially if they're going to be putting a retaining wall and changing the grades in there and producing an outrageous amount of fill to be hauled out, all of it's got to be hauled out right straight through Forster. And all the construction traffic will come in and out of Forster, and Forster's an asphalt road, and I got to believe that they'll tear it up. Now, I don't know whether the county will turn around and repair it, whether we'll get assessed for it, whether they can bond it. Again, then when we go into load restrictions, are they going to be coming in there during load restriction season? There would not be any truck hardly at all with any equipment that would be legal on Forster during those conditions. So that's my main concern. And also, as far as them filling in the lake, I guess DEQ is already approved. They're putting a lot of fill in the lake. There's places where it shows that the house itself is actually in the water right now, but they're going to be putting that much fill in the lake. And I'm also concerned about disturbing the equality of the lake of what's in there now. It's been settling that long, and the road has been there for 30 years. So those are my two biggest concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Come on down.
Mark Sapatowski, 51304 Forster Lane. First thing was, they said notices went out to 130 people that were mailed to the home. I live probably 10 houses down from the dead end on Forster Lane that would start the entrance to this condominium complex. Other than a neighbor putting a notice up on the mailbox, none of us knew anything about it or so. So being...we're this close to it, I don't understand why we didn't receive anything in the mail. Second of all, it sounds to me like, you know, the master plan showed Clear Spring Lake as one subdivision. Now, it looks like this is going to be a new community within the subdivision because they even have a separate name for it, like the condominiums of Clear Spring Lake Shores or something like that or so. I don't know the technical name of it or so, but it sounds to me like they're trying to make this a complex, separate from the subdivision or so, and that's not what the master plan showed. It showed the subdivision being one subdivision, Clear Spring Lake, and now it's like we have a small community within Phase 1, 2, and Phase 3 or so. Another thing is, you know, we pay a homeowner's due. We have the...we pay to have the streets plowed or so. How does this work with the condominium complex or so? If they're a separate community and they're not going to be in with our homeowners association, we clear this...we clear the street to, like, where the condominium complex starts, and then they use access that we're paying for as far as, you know, if they're not a part of our homeowners association or so. So I think, like, we all bought into this, you know, Clear Spring Lake, thinking it was going to be, you know, one community or so, one homeowners association. They're working on incorporating Phase 2 and Phase 3 into the homeowners association, and now we have Phase 4, which is going to be a separate community, which I don't think is right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Kathy Ireland, 3321 Sandy Point. Good evening.
Good evening.
To take on the...to finish, to continue on with the past homeowner, we in Clear Spring Lake Subdivision Number 1 were deeded portions of the lake, and actually Clear Spring Lake Homeowners Association owns the lake bottom. So the homeowners association hired an engineering firm to let us know exactly what we were deeded, and this is a map that shows you the whole development. And as Mr. Sapatowski said, we expected one continual neighborhood, not a separate. And the new condo association, they...if they have their own association rules, they don't have...they're not part of the lake because subdivision Number 1, where all the green hash marks are, we own that, the homeowners association. So how could they sell property...you know, are they going to sell these condominiums on the lake with the homeowners...the new homeowners having the assumption that they can get a boat, put it on the lake, and not have any problem when...if they don't conform their master deed to our association rules, it's...you know, they wouldn't legally be able to do that. So that's...and without being redundant, I have all the concerns as the other homeowners had previous to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Come on down, ma'am.
Linda Gooding-Hoffner, 3709 23 Mile Road. Kathy just showed you this diagram of Clear Spring Lake, 91-acre lake. Keep filling it in. I did not buy 30 years ago a 70-acre, 50-acre. I bought into a 91-acre lake. You keep filling this in, it's not going to be that. And as far as that sand and the elevation on the left or the west side, that was filled in by Garrett when he was doing Phase 3. So all that should actually be removed, not put into the lake. You know, that's about all I have to say, just reiterating what they said.
Hello, I'm Christina Graham. I live at 3198 Sandy Creek Drive, so I'm in the subdivision that would be north of the new development. Currently, the reason that my husband and I were even interested in the neighborhood was because of the privacy of the lots on Sandy Creek Drive. So those are some of the more coveted lots on Sandy Creek because you're not really surrounded by neighbors behind you at all. So we've been lucky to experience that over the last couple of years. The other thing that's really nice about it, too, is that... The other thing that's really nice about it too, is that there's a lot of wildlife back there. So we have a family of deer that come through pretty regularly. Every summer, we sit out back, and there's ducks that come through that have babies that walk between our yard and the neighbor's yard. And similar to Jeff's concerns, we are one of the lots, we're just two houses down from Jeff, that are actually on a pretty big slope, where there would be some issues there. If you drive further down Sandy Creek Drive, and you look at the new development of the houses that are coming up, you can see in the windows from Sandy Creek Drive. And even though there's a house in between, that would be our biggest concern, is part of the, the appealing nature of where we're living currently, is the fact that we're not straight on top of each other. So I would just be concerned that we would be losing, losing privacy, and that the wildlife that live back there would also all be displaced. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Ron Kozlowski. I live at 3667 23 Mile Road. I heard of this subject several weeks ago, and I understood that one of the reasons why a builder may want to proceed with a condo site was for flexibility and to speed up the process. Well, I've been on that lake for 25-plus years, and I've been looking at that vacant land, wondering when it was going to be developed. So my question is, if, if a site complex requires, or a condo site complex requires new bylaws, covenants, et cetera, why, why do we have to hurry now, when we've been looking at that property all these years? Let's, let's leave the development be as it was originally set up, and that it, it would then merge into the homeowners association without, without the other condominium connotation.
Come on down, sir.
Ken Malicki, 51052 Forrester Lane. I've lived there for 29 years so far. I want to know if, when I bought in there, there was, there was an original plat of, there were a total of 311 home sites in the entire sub that were planned out. And I guess I want to know if there's going to be more home sites in the end? That means a higher density of people? And the other, the other thing I'd like to know about is, is a creek runs across the very northwest corner of that property. It's always wet, and it's always running water, it's one of the natural springs that feeds the lake. And is that going to meet the approval of the DEQ? I'd like to know more about that.
Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Christian Sana, 3018 Sandy Creek. And I'm so glad this gentleman before me mentioned about that spring, because that, there is a spring there, and it doesn't freeze in the winter time, and you can see it bubbling up from the water. So I don't know, that's a good idea to put a house there, or what the plan is, but I am curious about that. I have a neighbor that is the original homeowner where I live, and he said originally, when all, because we have these slopes, when all the dirt was taken away, according to him, and this is according to him, I don't know, that it was to be replaced by the owner of the property. And he said he made several calls, and everyone who lived there, and nobody could find the paperwork on that, so I am curious about that also. But I, I primarily came here, other than hearing all this, is the retaining wall. I too have a cliff, and then these big, huge trees come up, and they're gorgeous, but I have lost property, and years ago, I did write the owner of the property a nice letter, asking if he could please do something, that I was losing my trees, and nothing happened. So I would like to see a retaining wall up there. I've tried to fill in as much as I can, like if I'm digging a hole, I'll throw some stuff down there. I got one area built up a little bit, but it's my tree, I've lost a lot of trees because of it. So I really want a retaining wall, and I don't want the homeowners to be responsible for it, if at all possible. I'd like to see the builder do it uniform and do a good job, like the big boulders down the street, which, down the street scares me very much, because when I drive by there and look at those homes, and then see you have a second story layer looking right into your first story, there is no privacy at all. It's really, really quite scary, but I guess that's all. So it would be the, the retaining wall, what happened with the developer beforehand, if it slipped through the cracks, which is what he says, and then what's going on with the DEQ with that, that nice spring that comes up from the ground, that never freezes, it's always there. Thank you.
Harry Zarowski, I live at 51352 Forrester Lane. I've been there since 87, and about 15 to 20 years ago, I don't know exactly the years, my neighbors and a few of us, we put a seawall in, because we had a lot of erosion from the wind and storms and all the time. So we wanted to put a seawall in. So we went ahead and started, we got a contractor to put it. Well, when he laid it out, he was off like 6 inches to a foot, over 500 feet. The DNR come in and knocked it down, because we were taking too much of the lake. And by the picture that I have here, the north-west corner of it, looks like it'll be filled in 20, 30 feet. I'm sure the DNR is going to have to say something about this, because we couldn't deviate by one foot. And here, it looks like, I don't know how much, you know, it's quite a bit. So I'm sure the DNR has to get it, and they'll have to get permits from the DNR too, and which I don't think it'll pass. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
I'm Linda Caderiu. I live at 51534 Sandshores Drive. And we've lived there six years, in what we call heaven. And my home is right across from the undeveloped area. So I see a lot of the traffic, I see all the traffic. I'm always out at the lake, how many boats are going by, the families, the kayaks, the paddleboards, the fishing. One of my main concerns is, with that many people, that would be attracted to a 54 single unit condo system, the density of it, is everyone going to have access to the lake? Is every family going to be allowed a boat, a pontoon, whatever? I just can't imagine having that many people in that property, and keeping the lake, the same lake that we all bought onto. I'm also concerned, is there going to be any space given for the preservation of nature? Or are these units taking the entire shore that we're looking at? I would say that everybody in the subdivision that has a boat loves this area, what I call the bay. They come there on their pontoons, they come there for the sunsets, there's great fishing. It's a beloved part of the lake. If that is totally being covered by these condo units, will there be other homes, is there still going to be space for other homes, or is it all condo units, and will there be any of the land preserved as natural? Or will it all be stripped, and then 54 homes get access for their boat, their kayak, et cetera? That's one of the main concerns. I think it would change things greatly. It would not be the same lake. I also have a concern about the way we were notified. I don't know, I heard the word that it was, that we have the public hearing, that there's only one public hearing, where you see the, you see how many people. We definitely have interest on this. But the notification, perhaps I'm wrong. I don't, I didn't receive anything in the mail that I know of, did anyone? There was a very tiny printed notice, put inside a plastic slip and taped to the postbox, which is against the law, to tamper with any US Postal Service material. It was so tiny, it was only on one side of, we, we have the common postal service boxes. It was on one side, tiny, tiny print, and the weather, the rain, et cetera, had gotten to it, of course, even though it was in a plastic slip. Someone brought it to my attention, I hadn't even seen it. I went to read it, I couldn't even read it, I had to press against the plastic slip through the humidity that had gathered in there, to try to read this. I do not fair, feel that it was a fair notification at all. One of my kind neighbors told me, there's a notification up there, go check it out. I did. Then he said, please tell other neighbors. I went to nine neighbors. Of the nine neighbors, not one of them had seen the notification. So I'm very concerned about the fairness of this as well. I think, I agree with everything, I thought there were excellent, excellent points that were brought up. And will there also be any public, or any park set aside for another park access? We do have one park access now, for Phase 1, 2, and 3. And it is along the street that, that I live on, Sandshores Drive, which is one of the access roads. That's the only park access for people using it for picnics, for families, for walking their dogs, for, if they live on 23 and don't, and their backyard is on 23 Mile Road, rather than, or if they live on Forrester and their backyard is on 23, rather than on the lake, that's where they bring their lakes, their boats to get access to the lake. Will there be any park areas set aside as well on that coastline? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a pretty good list of issues. Does anybody have anything different that they'd like to add to what we've already talked about? Come on down, sir.
My name is Scott Meldrum. I live at 51533 Forrester Lane. I'm the house right next to all this development. I'm looking at the layout, or the proposed layout, I see all the driveways are on the left-hand side of the development, and all the driveways in Forrester Lane are all on the right. So what's going to happen is the driveways are going to come together at my house in a new sub. I was wondering if that can be eliminated.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything new they'd like to add? Oh, you've already been down once, so we can't come down twice. Most of us haven't either, but go ahead.
Robert Decker. I live next to Scott, second from the last house, right by all this. My wife and I moved in to Clear Spring Lake in 2004. It's been a roller coaster of a journey, trying to figure out how we all got to this situation. The first thing you're told is, you're part of an association which is only a part of the whole subdivision, a very small portion. You get bits and pieces of information over time, over years, but nobody really sits back and tells you the entire story of how this all got so screwed up. People have tried to take people to court over things, and the judges have been like, oh my God, how did this mess get like this? I think what happened, and it's just my theory, you had your original developer, he got very wealthy very quick, and lost interest in continuing to finish the project. You had your residents coming up and saying, we need the project finished, because we can't go ahead with any kind of association, we can't have rules, we can't have any type of, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Organization. So the first phase took it upon themselves to start an association, but it was only that first phase, that first row of houses. And as the other phases came in, they were still part of the developers, which the developer was taking his sweet time finishing the whole project. We've now gone over 30 years, and we're still not finished with the fourth phase. We had heard through the grapevine again, nobody told us this, that the developer passed away a couple years ago in a car accident. Now his kids have taken over. And we never, ever were told, when we came to this, that anything but single-family homes were going to surround the whole lake. You've since got into a lot of political stuff with the shoreline. When I asked about the development, and I'd come to the association meeting every year to see what's going on with the development. Obviously, if you live one house away, you're kind of concerned when all the bulldozers are going to be coming. I was told that the next thing that had to happen was the shoreline had to be leveled off. And if you looked from a Google map at it right now, the shoreline is very uneven. And there was no way they could put single-family homes in there at an even size, unless the shoreline was adjusted. All of a sudden now, that's like, very confused as to what's going on with that. But now these condos have come up, and it's like, it appears like this is some kind of a shortcut, or easy way to get to the almighty dollar. I don't know, but it just seems like, all of a sudden condos, everybody, at least 95% of everyone in our subdivision owns their house. There might be a few rented out, but if you're going to bring in condos, aren't most of those going to be rented out? So you're going to have people that really don't even own them, that are living there, with homeowners that were told, this would always be a single-family association subdivision. So, my biggest concerns, I mean, we knew the land was going to be developed, things like the wildlife, the spring, the, you know, we're not going to get around that, you're going to have to take it into consideration when the final plans are in place. But this whole thing on condos just kind of hit us right out of nowhere, and there was never any discussion about it before. And we just would like, you know, this really considered before doing something this far out, you know, right down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, the condos go through two phases, preliminary and final. This is a very preliminary stage right now. There are a lot of questions, as you brought up, and concerns that are raised by the planner and the engineer, that have to be addressed before anything can be done going forward, so. But I hear what you're saying.
Chairman, let me just address the condo.
Mr. Wynn, go ahead.
These are detached, single-family homes. The, how the property title is conveyed is the only issue where the condo comes up. We follow the same process and procedures, where they get some relief from the timing, is that the state of Michigan, for the plating process takes a little longer, but we have a parallel process that's the same. But these are detached, single-family homes on individual lots. Mr. Warr can probably address how's, who's going to handle maintenance and how that comes into play, but in, in all other ways, shape and form, these are detached, single-family homes.
Right.
You won't notice, you wouldn't notice a difference.
Does anyone else have anything different they'd like to add? Going once, going twice? Under the gun, come forward.
Hannah Corkus, 51390 Sandshores Drive. I know there is two entrances to the condo, one on the east side, one on the west side. Is it possible they can do- one on the east side, one on the west side. Is it possible they can do another entrance for the, for the condo through Shelby Road or through whatever there is to the counter because there is condo there instead of disturbing this area? Like somebody said, we have a bus stop where they are, and people come and pick up their kids. Imagine 54 condo. You don't know who's going to live there and how many kids and what kind of impact is going to be doing there. So I know they're going to make, everything is business. They're going to make a lot of money. But if they can buy a land where they go not from those two entrances, it will be a lot easier. To me and to most of the people, this is most of the concern. And another thing which they mentioned is will be another place where people can bring their boats or they're going to use the one we have. And, and I, if they decided, and if it was approved, the way, like I said, most, like she said, I didn't even know about it until last night when she came and told me. And I went to every single neighbor. Nobody knew. There was no time for them to come. So I wish it's going to be another meeting where everybody can come, more questions, and because we are all concerned. When I bought my property six years ago, nobody told me condo they're going to come. Because our property value here is over 500. I don't know what kind of size condo they're going to put there, what's the value market for them. And I believe they're going to affect our community. And I would like you to take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in, too. I will mention one thing on the entrances. Since you brought it up and another neighbor brought it up, you do have two entrances to your sub. Some developments have come in. We've had 70, 80, 90 units go in, and they propose one entrance. And I've raised concerns about one entrance being a safety factor because if that entrance is blocked by an accident or any other situation down a tree and the fire department cannot get in there, then you have an issue. You have the two. If you go to the third one, I'm just thinking off the top of my head now, since you brought it up, you could come up with a situation where there's cut through traffic, which might exacerbate the traffic on your, on your interior roads. I haven't looked at it, but that's just also something to keep in mind about a third entrance going up to Shelby. You've already been up once, sir. You can't come up twice.
There were two additional entrances proposed in the original plan thirty years ago.
Go ahead.
Julie Jarkey-Koslowski, 366723 Mile. Lot of chit-chat going on. Property values just came up. But when we moved in, I know there was a restriction in terms of how big the houses could be. You couldn't have anything smaller than 1,800 square feet. And I wonder if the condos are going to be smaller than that because that was in part of our restriction and covenants. So just a note for that.
Okay, thank you. Come on down. Anything different to add? Because we've already got our pretty hefty list here.
My name is Diane Mormino, and I live at 51463 San Shores Drive. I just found out about this Sunday. This is Monday. I wanted to know if everyone's read the restricted covenants. I reiterate, everything that everyone said here, I agree completely. I'm concerned with the entrances. I'm concerned with the traffic. I'm concerned with the lake and how it'll be preserved, the wildlife. So I just wanted to say, as far as our restricted covenants, since I've been there since 1987, I'm quite familiar with the restricted covenants and what they allow. And I wondered if everyone's read those and know that the square footage of the homes is 1,800, the very least. So I just wanted to get my name on that sheet as well.
Okay, thank you. That'll do it. Anybody else have anything new to add? Going once, going twice? Hearing none, we'll bring it back up to the board. Mr. Nguyen, before we go any further, I'd like you to comment on this notification issue that we've had because 156 notices did go out, but obviously some didn't get any.
We notify, there are two, there's two ways we notify. We put a notice in the paper 15 days ahead of time, and we're required by state law to notify anybody from the outer perimeter boundaries of 300 feet. And we keep a record of that. And if anybody's interested, we're happy to share that. But that's the requirement of state law. We use that for all public hearings. Now.
300 feet of noise.
I'm just explaining what the requirement is and how we process it. So that's, that's how we do it.
No, we're already, I close, well.
Question on the notification. Phase 1, home to property right up to it, we were never given any formal letter.
Just tell you, we base it off the property. If somebody wants to come to the counter tomorrow, I'd be happy to walk through how we do this. And afterwards, if anybody, if we postpone this, anybody that spoke will be notified the second time around.
I'm going to bring, oh, it is back up here, so we're not, we've closed the public comment portion. Mr. Nguyen, let's go, have the petitioner come back up. There's some questions I'm sure you're going to need to answer, too. I understand your concerns about the covenants and the restrictions. And yes, they should, there should be some compatibility and similarity between your development and the phases 1, 2, and 3, which they're trying to merge into one. I would agree to that. Mr., I think you already defined the single-family condo versus the, and I don't think it's a matter of renting versus ownership. I think when you have these size of homes, what size of homes or condos are you planning to build there?
We're planning on building at least the square footage are larger than it exists currently.
Move the mic up a little bit so they can hear you.
We're planning on building units that will be at least as big or larger square footage-wise than typically exists in Phase 2 and Phase 3. I'm not that familiar with Phase 1. I've driven through it a couple of times just to get an idea of, you know, what size homes are in there. But I wasn't, I've only been employed by the company since 2013. It seems like to me the biggest confusion is in regard to what a condominium means. And, and I think, and I'm not an attorney, by the way.
You can address the chair. Go ahead.
Can I? It's kind of uncomfortable to talk to.
Talk to me. Talk to me, sir. They can hear you. Talk to me.
So anyway, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to do a very good job explaining the difference between condominium law and, and platted, single-family property. But the bottom line is it gives the association more tooth in regard to remedies when people don't, don't follow the association rules or don't pay their dues. And so it's actually, it's actually a better thing for homeowners' association. The, the properties are individually owned. The common areas are the areas that are quote-unquote condos. And the common areas then are restricted by the covenants of the condominium association. And Mr. Nguyen will tell you that it's much easier to enforce those rules under, under those guidelines. And, and it also, there hasn't, and, and Mr. Nguyen, maybe you can answer this question. When was the last time somebody did a platted subdivision in, in Shelby Township?
We don't get those very often anymore. This is a common.
It, it almost doesn't exist in the state in regard to single-family development. So I haven't done one in 20 years. So at any rate, I think that, you know, I think that's the biggest concern is people don't understand that have lived in platted subdivisions that 99% of the new subdivisions in the last 20 years are all quote-unquote site condo. So I hope that helps people understand.
Now, they brought up a point about construction access and damage to the roads. Mr. Nguyen, that is a very legitimate question that they bring up. What do we do about that?
Well, I guess I'd ask the applicant what's he going to do about that.
Yes, what would we do about that? Because you all only have two ways in.
Absolutely. And it occurs all the time in development of all nature. And, and frankly, the, the road that we, I'm also involved in the vertical construction of Phase 2 and 3, actually Phase 3. The equipment that we use on the residential construction is restricted by the same weight laws as the, any other equipment that we might use to construct or mask grade the proposed Phase 4 or the new condominium development. So the only way to access that would be the existing roads. And we, you know, follow all the restrictions and requirements of the, of the county in regard to the use of those roads. And.
Typically, when we have these infill-type properties, we do have construction access. And I can see where the residents raise up some legitimate questions about damage to their asphalt roads. That's just something that needs to be thought about. Now, on the retaining wall, Mr. Nguyen, you want to explain that again, what the engineer talked about with the retaining wall?
The engineer wanted to see a common retaining wall along that north property line to stabilize the slope versus having it, if you, if without that, it would be done on individual lot basis, which would lead for, I think visually not appealing and maybe structurally not adequate. So that's why they wanted to see something done that way. The other, can I weigh in on one more question?
Go ahead, yeah.
About access, there, there was a, there is a stub street off of Sandy Creek that stops at the northern property line. You know, norm, under normal circumstances, you'd want those subs connected. But because of the slope, you know, you'd be straight. The grade of that road would be so severe that, you know, it'd be a safety hazard. So we're not suggesting that road be connected. That's rare for me to say that, as you well know.
Yes.
But it would, it would not be feasible to do that.
And they brought up the fill of the lake. I'm sure that would come under DEQ inspections and permit.
And I think maybe their engineer could address that question.
We have petitioned and already received a DEQ permit for the fill. So all aspects of restoring the shoreline to its original condition will be held underneath that permit.
Bear with me a second. I'm looking through all my notes here. Some of these were private issues that need to be dealt with in the covenants and restrictions. I think that covers it from here. Did you have something, Mrs. Moore?
I do.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the, had you thought about possibly merging with the existing master deed and bylaws with the existing association? Because there will be a lot of confusion.
Yes, I understand that the, the current homeowners' association in Phase 1 is standalone, and it's going to be merged with the homeowners' association in Phase 2 and 3. And the proposed Phase 4 would be integrated with those exact bylaws. Now, the only thing, there is going to have to be a joint operating agreement developed because the condominium association has stricter guidelines than the subdivision association. But, so there will, there will be some separation, but there'll have to be a joint operating agreement for maintenance of the common areas that they do share, like the entryways that were, that was brought up.
They were also talking about dues for maintaining of the lake and the use of the lake.
That would be all part of a joint operating agreement between the, the association that exists, the association that's going to be rolled into it, and the new association.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions they'd like to ask?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to know.
Go ahead, Mr. Dallow.
These roads, Mr. Nguyen, are these private or public roads?
Public.
They are public roads?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would say going forward with the road issue, we will be requiring some type of bond for repair. The roads do get damaged. Did you fellows notice a, there were a couple neighbors talking about a spring up in the northwest corner or creek?
Yeah, I've walked the property several times, and I did not notice that. There's a, there's a.
Hey, everybody. Everybody, you've had your chance to speak. I know what, how you're feeling, but let's maintain some decorum.
There seems to be a, like, there's a pond or an area in, in back that retains water. Last time I was back there was about, was, I'm not that, I'm not intimately familiar with, with the topography of that. You know, I walked it a couple of times with a couple of contractors. I walked the perimeter and then the lakefront. And I did notice that the topography creates a lot of areas that do seem to collect water.
A lot of our larger developments that come before the board, we ask for green space. Are you prepared to give up some green space?
Um, you, we're, we're, we were just following the guidelines that were proposed and approved ahead of time.
I understand that, not what I asked.
You know, I just represent the owner and, and the developer.
And you can't commit it.
So, you know, I'm, at this point, I can't answer that question for you. I'm sorry.
Okay. And just one comment to the audience. I'm sure you all know it's going to be developed, right? The green space will be gone, or what's there is going to be gone. There'll be something there. But hopefully, we can get it to accommodate every one of you, well, most of you. Thank you.
What Mr. Wozniak was talking about is when we have planned new developments, typically we ask the developer to set aside 10% or whatever of the property for green space preservation. Someone had mentioned a park. I don't know. That's what he was referring to.
And just taking that a step further, when they're asking for something reducing the, the requirements beyond a certain level, then, you know, that sort of negotiation can take place. Now, they are going to be asking for some reductions in, in some areas, and we want to make sure that they're not out of line with what's already there. So that's, you know, maybe having an access for the lake at the north end would be appropriate. So all those people on San Shores Drives aren't burdened by that extra traffic. So that was a point worth thinking about.
I agree.
One other, I've.
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
Usually I ask, too, if developers are willing to meet with all the neighbors. Have you done that yet?
We have not.
Okay. Could I ask you that you plan on doing that with the neighbors so you can get at least some opinions coming back? You got a lot tonight. And I think there's a result, resolution here at someplace, but it's got to be through communication.
As I stated, the owner is in the process of turning the association for 2 and 3 over to the homeowners. And I believe, and I don't know all of the legalities, but I believe that, that that is going to be rolled into the number one, or the Phase 1's association so that they're all one. But I'm not sure exactly how that, how that's going to be conveyed. And at that time, the owner was going to talk about the new development, you know, through her attorney with the homeowners' association.
I think as Mr. Decker pointed out, up to this time, all those associations haven't done anything to get together, and it's about time they did that. So maybe that's the impetus. Maybe you guys are the impetus for that.
I, I believe you're correct, sir. Yes. Thank you.
When we've had situations where we've had developments come before us that have not been well-received, when the developer has taken the initiative to meet with the residents, they've come to a conclusion that benefits everybody. So, point well taken. I think it's something you could do and should do. Anyone else have any questions or comments to ask? Hearing none. Motion on this would be in order. Go ahead, Mrs. Moore. I think I did that, didn't I? Oh, and a motion to close the public hearing?
Sommo, support.
Motion moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The planning commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table this to receive, to evaluate the information we've received this evening. Motion would be in order. Go ahead, Mrs. Caselli.
I move to postpone the preliminary condominium plans for the shores of Clear Spring Lake, Site Plan 17-41 SLU-10, based on revising the plans to address all department and engineering comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Caselli, supported by Commissioner Capone. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Just one.
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
So we're postponing, they're coming back to us?
Yes.
Okay. After their meeting with the residents?
We hope.
Got it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Commissioner Caselli?
Yes.
Commissioner Apone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Motion to postpone. Thank you. And I want to thank everybody for coming out and giving us a very good list of points to consider going forward. Everybody could make their way out of the room as quickly as possible, or you can stay if you'd like. We still have some more business to attend to.
It's up to him.
Up to them. Watch it, get them up right now.
Yeah, we don't, we don't organize that. Thanks, Mr. Hunter.
If you could close the door in, out in the back of the room when you leave, that would help. This side. Okay, we're moving on. Our next site plan, number 17-42, for Mario Kezy, vacant parcel at 23 Mile and Nappy Drive. Multi-tenant buildings with a drive-through and patio facilities. Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, let the applicant.
Oh, come on, yeah, the applicant, come on down, let us know what you want to do here.
Missage did the review on this one, so.
Oh, that's right. Julie, that's right.
Good evening, members of the Board. Jake Modesto, Stonefield Engineering Design, here representing the applicant, 23 Mile and Nappy LLC. The property we're talking about tonight is a 3.69 acre lot. It's undeveloped. It's currently zoned light manufacturing LM. The properties to the north, the south, the east, and the west are also zoned light manufacturing. The applicant is proposing a two-building development. This development will consist of a 7,674 square foot multi-tenant building with a drive-through facilities, that would be to the west, and then a 7,520 square foot multi-tenant building to the east. These buildings will be separated by a landscaped courtyard. This courtyard will break up the building, instead of having one long building, it'll be broken up with this landscaped courtyard. This gives us the opportunity to provide more architectural features throughout the building. The, the application will also include 123 parking spaces, 112 are required by city code. The application will be requiring a variance. This variance will be for parking within the front yard. Just wanna grab the exhibit.
Go ahead. You can actually take this mic and speak from there, if you'd like.
I just don't hold that.
It should be on.
Hello?
Yep.
So, we're proposing 123 parking spaces, 112 are required by code. So, the parking setback is for the parking spaces within the front yard. Now, we had to kinda look at this whole site as a whole, for not only just our development, but the entire corridor from Van Dyke all the way through 23 Mile. The development itself, we try to keep in a couple elements. One is connectivity. So what we like to have done is, there's an existing access drive, as you guys can see, from the gas station, all the way across through the back of these restaurants here, and it almost connects into our property. So we tried to keep that going. Our proposed development. Also, one of the elements, too, here, was keeping that corridor intact with regards to the building setback. We tried to maintain that. We were also proposing a sidewalk that provides a sidewalk now from Van Dyke all the way to our property. So the applicant is also proposing 28 trees and over 200 shrubs throughout the site. We will also be meeting all lighting standards by proposing nine LED site fixtures, 13 building-mounted light fixtures. This will be illuminated, the whole site will be illuminated to meet city standards, sorry, township standards. We're also proposing the site to meet all stormwater requirements from the township. We do have, we did receive the review letter from Glenn. There are 11 items on here. Can you just go through them really quick?
Oh, we'll have, before you do that, I'll have our planner go through that, the items on the agenda, on their review, too. So, just make your presentation, and we'll give it over to her.
Oh, that, yeah, I was just gonna go through the agenda, but that is more or less it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Julie, you want to give us a review?
As the engineer stated, they are submitting for two multi-tenant buildings with a drive-through and an outdoor patio area between the two buildings. The property is located on the east side of Nappy Drive, just north of 23 Mile Road. The site is served by two driveways, one off of 23 Mile, another one is off of Nappy Drive. It's also, as he stated, they're adding, they need a variance for the parking lot setback on 23 Mile. We, you know, we would recommend approval for that. It provides a continual, you know, visual landscape screening across the site. Also, I had a question. What are the intentions for the property just north of the building?
We don't have any intentions at the moment. I know we've had, we've gone through multiple designs, I think over a year now, of going back and forth with what we're gonna do for that rear area. The applicant want that hold up, this front portion. So at this point, you know, we don't, there's could be something, we don't know yet, though.
Okay. Just some minor comments. I'd like a note on the site plans that no outdoor storage is permitted. Any roof-mounted equipment would be screened. A separate sign application would be required for the monument sign that you have proposed on, on the site. Public sidewalks are required to be seven feet. Fire department asks that no parking fire lane signage be added around the building in the north side of the structure. Fire hydrants need to be within 250 feet of all parts of the building. The Macomb County Road Commission asks that you line up the approach with the existing approach on the south. There's no deceleration lane required west of the approach. And some minor comments from the engineer as well. The entrance and any improvements in the 23 Mile Road and Nappy Drive rights of way are subject to review and approval of Macomb County Department of Roads, and that's the only comment that we got from him, was to line up those driveways to the south. Other than that, that they meet all the requirements, and then I would recommend approval for the variance for the parking.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one comment on the variance?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Nguyen.
The site to the, let me back up. In the, this is a zone light manufacturing, so it's a 25-foot setback. If it was a commercial site, you'd have a 10-foot parking lot setback. So the property to the west, where you have the three fast-food restaurants, they received a variance, but the approval required them to do a little extra landscaping. You notice there's some, some fence features in there with some pillars. So, I think it'd be nice if the Board of Appeals approves this. We're gonna suggest that they match it, so on either side of Nappy Drive, you have that consistent appearance. I agree with Julie that the setback variance makes some sense. Instead of pushing everything back, you have some continuity, but it'd be really nice if you went through there and that front design is carried through. So, we just offer that as a suggestion when you come to the ZBA. That would really make it look like we planned something.
Right.
That's all I have.
And it, Mr. Dallow, go ahead.
Turner, the opening between the two buildings, this is a great idea for having, like, outside seating and all of that. Is that, after hours, is that gonna be closed? Is it prepared to be shut down, also when the businesses close, or that's open?
At this point, at this point, there's no intention to close it. It really depends on how the tenants.
How wide is that area?
Approximately 25 feet.
25 feet? Is it possible to be closed when the business closes? Because to me, this would be a kinda safety issue for people, Mr. Nguyen.
No, I don't think it would be. You know, I think it's there for the convenience of people. There's one of these others, we have a similar design in front of Myers, Mr. Dallow, and I think it offer, I mean, to close it, I think it'd be kind of artificial. If nobody's there, if there's no, if the businesses are closed, there's no reason for anybody else to be there. So I think visually, I agree with you, it's very attractive.
I, I agree with you. I like, I think this is gonna be adding a lot of beauty to everybody else, that is separate building west of it, and it would be a nice fit. I just feel like we'll be more safe at nighttime.
Yeah, I think given the traffic, and you know, you have defensible spaces when you have visible spaces, and this is all visible. So if it was tucked away somewhere, Mr. Dallow, I would agree with you, but I think in this setting, it functions best by being just left as an open space.
There are lighting features in there, too, to illuminate the entire place.
There, that's a good point.
Thank you.
It's a very good design and a really nice presentation.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
There's no real decel lane, right?
No, there is a taper going into the drive.
Todd, the taper?
Yeah, there's, there's no decel lane per Macomb County's request.
I figured they were doing that. You ever been on 23 Mile during rush hour?
Yes, yes. Understand.
We're gonna see a few accidents there, I think. That's all.
Now, when you're looking for the drive-through, you look at the corridor from Van Dyke to here, what else could go in there that's not there already for a drive-through? You've got coffee, you've got fast food. What else is left?
I wish I knew. I know our client works a lot of national tenants.
Okay.
So he's probably one of those guys. I know he's gotten a lot of interest. That's why he's wanting to move forward, is so, so rapidly, and not wait for that rear portion. So I know there's a lot of interest here, and he really wants to get going right away.
Okay, no problem. Just curious. Anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Dallow.
I move to approve the site plan, application number 17-42, for Mario Kezy, 23 Mile and Nappy LLC, for a property located at 23 Mile Road and Nappy Drive, parcel number 23-0714376019, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dallow, supported by Mr. Oppone. Mr. Nguyen, will we want to put something on here, a positive recommendation on the setback for the parking?
Yeah, I think Mrs. Missage suggested, I think that's a good suggestion, because I think it's relevant to the ZBA. They look very carefully at your recommendation.
I will add that to my motion, Mr. Turner.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Casselli?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any new business? I guess not.
I got a couple.
Mr. Nguyen? Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just, thank you. We have two items that came up just recently that didn't make it on the agenda, and they're, they're more of administrative-type approvals, but I'd still like to share these with you. There's an existing restaurant on the west side of Shainer, north of 23 Mile Road. It's been a couple of Italian restaurants, and it was, I think, a clock restaurant years ago. It's vacant. And we have somebody that's interested in, in reoccupying it for a seafood restaurant. So they came up with a plan, there's some outdoor seating along the south entrance and to the north, and there's actually a pad, there was a patio there originally for it. And then, you can see the top picture, there's one up in front of you as well, is the existing entrance, and they want to upgrade it, so the sign area's a little more visible, so there's a walk-through to the entrance, because it doesn't really look like you know where to get there now. So, we, this came in, and, you know, we normally would have approved this administratively, but I thought the timing, I wanted to share with you. If you have no objection, we'll go ahead and approve this. I think this is a huge improvement.
Any objection?
No, sir, Mr. Turner.
Go for it.
That's the only thing we don't have, actually, in the township, is the seafood.
And this is existing, it's the people that run Steiny's Restaurant, 25, they're, you know, very good, you know, nice business, and they, they're interested, so, you know, I was very encouraged by that. The second one was, you may recall that property at the southeast corner of Auburn and Ryan that was in for the facade improvements, remember? You can see they've torn the facade off, and they're, they're moving forward. We met with them on, or, yeah, so, we're still interested in having to do some site improvements out there, some minor things. And Scott met with them on site, and they're, they're eager to do some entrance improvements, take the old sign down, which I thought was all, all good. The only, the thing they asked about was, they're, they're not putting a party store back in there, they're, they intended to have an 800-square-foot vape and smoke shop, and apparently, they have some restrictions on how many square feet they can use because of utility restrictions on the site. So what they've asked to do is occupy the entire site for the smoke shop, which is 2,400 square feet, usually limited to 1,600 for the C1, otherwise, we could approve it administratively with the chairman's concurrence with me. And I, I don't want to have a public hearing for that. I think it makes sense to get this building occupied, and if you have no objection, we'll sign his COZ to have it in there.
Any objections, anybody?
They've been real cooperative.
How many will we have down there? Four, five?
I don't know. You know, I think the market will eventually shake out. And what's interesting, across the street, that building you've seen has been redone, the facade. I think they already have a couple of tenants lined up. That's a real success, and they are gonna be making some improvements to the parking lot.
Yes, they are.
Happy to see that.